Indian Trail Town Council Meeting, if we'll all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll remain standing for a moment of silence, and if you'll remember our neighbors in western North Carolina and everything that's going on there, if we could say a special prayer for western North Carolina, the mountains, and anybody that's had Helena, that has done damage to, please say a prayer for them. And also, our town manager has been ill, and he may be out for another week or so. So, say a prayer for a quick recovery, if you would. Thank you. Please be seated. Brings us up to some upcoming events. The only upcoming event that we have is the one of the most fun things I think we do here is Hits After Six is October the 17th, so that'll be next Thursday. I think it's, the band is, what is it, Something Sylvia?
Too Much Sylvia.
Too Much Sylvia? And they're good. I've seen them before, and that's always a fun time. So hopefully the weather be nice, and it'll be the last one we have until next year, next spring. So please come out if you can. Okay, this brings us to additions. Do we have any additions or deletions? If not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, presentations. Union County Public Schools School Bond. So, we have a couple of nice young ladies here with us today. Kathy?
Yes.
Hantel?
Hantel.
Hantel.
Yep.
Come on up.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Dr. Rogers and Sarah May.
Hi, how are you? And I don't know if I know how to work this. Do we just click to the...
Yep, you just click the over button, and then it'll go back and forth.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. We're here to go over our request on the school bond, which is November 5th on the ballot. This is just like a quick history, all the school bonds since 2000 that the district has done. There's been a variety of schools built through the years. I'm just gonna go quickly over that. And then basically, we're at this year where we're asking for two projects. The first is basically the second part to the bond in '22 where we put out for a new Forest Hills. We're looking to renovate the current Forest Hills, and we will make it East Union Middle School. That way, they'll both be on the same campus. I don't know if anybody's familiar, but they're several miles away from each other. They can utilize all the same facilities, athletics, transportation, because they do ride the same buses. So that project would basically give them all new, I mean, they would do all new HVAC, plumbing, electrical, and then they'd do major renovation to make it more current. So the cost for that is $27,567,447. The second part of the bond is basically for the design and all of the preliminary work that would be needed for a new Parkwood High School. That would go on the same property where the current Parkwood High School would be, and the cost for that is $10,705,804. And then there's just a little contingency built in, you know, to make sure, in, you know, today's market, that we don't end up going over budget. Basically, we're asking for these projects because they are aging facilities. East Union Middle School, which is on 74, was built, I believe, in the 50s. And so we'd like to give them a newly renovated building, and also, like I mentioned, have them to have the capability, all of our other clusters pretty much do share the same campus, so they would get to be like all of our other clusters. And we do have a long-range plan that we came up with with the county back in, I believe they started meeting in 2018 to come up with a long-range plan. And, you know, that is something that would be on bonds in the future. That's just a little bit of a rendering to show what the current East Union looks like. And that's just some design ideas. They are in process. We had the design money for that project, so they're in the process of going through that, and we haven't actually seen what they've come up with as, you know, what the new school would look like if we get the bond passed. This is just a little bit about Parkwood, built in the 60s. The new school, like I mentioned, would be built on land right there on the same campus. It would be, we're looking at a three-story building, and we are looking at increasing the capacity, because when we look at that area specifically Waxaw, we do notice, you know, a lot of potential growth coming. And that's just some pictures of what the current Parkwood High School looks like. This is part of that 10-year plan that I mentioned. It's in no particular order, and it's just basically, the county asked the school system and South Piedmont to sit down and come up with a long-range plan, so they could get an idea of, you know, what kind of facilities that we would need down the road. And this is part of that list. And basically, bonds can be spent only on construction and renovation of facilities. You can buy land, anything capital-related. We can't use it, you know, like for teacher salaries or anything like that. And a bond is just basically local government agency. It's a way to fund construction projects. There would be, I don't know how we could, as a school system, ever save up enough, you know, to do that in a timely manner, because, you know, we're trying to be as cost-effective as possible. And that's really why, instead of building a new East Union, you know, we're looking to renovate, because a new school would be anywhere, a middle school, 80 to 100 million dollars. So, this is trying to be as cost-effective as possible. And so I went over basically what's included in it. And it was selected through this project, you know, this group that they met for over a year to come up with projects with the county staff. If the bond doesn't pass, I mean, basically, it would just have to be, you know, pushed further down the road, and we would have to come back again and, you know, hopefully ask for one. We can do it only in even election years, so the next opportunity would be in '26. People are asking, because East Union has a lot of history, do we have a plan, what we would do with the old East Union? And we really don't. It would be most likely up to the county, because they would get the right of first refusal. And so that would be something, you know, down the road that we'd have to figure out. That's about East Union. I understand people who feel like their child's school is not being impacted on this particular bond, but we do have plans going forward. So, you know, there are pretty much as plans to cover most of the schools in the county, especially the aging facilities. The tax increase would basically work out to, it's $8 per every hundred thousand of property value. So if you had a $300,000 house, that would be $24 a year, would be the estimated increase for this bond. And November 5th is Election Day, and early voting starts October 17th, so that's next Thursday. And they will hopefully have people handing out information, you know, at the polls. We're trying to get volunteers for that. And any information people would want, if you go to the website on there, it pretty much has everything I've talked about, and then some. If anyone have any further questions. They're also doing a Facebook Live session on the 14th, so that's Monday. So people, if, you know, you couldn't make it to one of our, you know, meetings where we're going around to try to inform people, they can watch it from home, and it's interactive, so they can ask questions at that time. And this was just, we've been trying to do community meetings, and also go to the different town councils to inform them. Oh, and see you at the poll. Hope that didn't take too long. Any questions?
That was great. Guys, do you have any, anybody have any questions? I have one. Now, did you say, is that a 39 mil? I saw that. What's the total?
Yeah, let me tell you exactly. Where's my sheet? I'll just go back.
I'm sorry. I think it said 30, I just...
I think it's 39. What's 27 for East Union? So 39, 421, 448.
And that, and mainly that's school improvements, correct? I mean, that were, you're building any new schools? And I'm, I was putting this on so I could hear you.
Oh, okay.
Why?
That would be taking the current Forest Hills High School, doing a complete renovation on it, so it'd be like a new school, and it would become East Union Middle School.
Gotcha.
So the last bond in '22, we're in the process of building a new Forest Hills High School on the same campus, and they will move into that school starting the next school year.
Gotcha.
And then it would just be the design to come up with what the plan is for the new Parkwood High School, which would be a future bond.
I know you called this a 10-year bond. You said that, I thought. No?
10-year capital.
10-year what?
It was a long-range plan.
Okay.
Yes. That the county basically asked the school system back in, I think it was 2018, 2019, they met for about a year with South Piedmont and with the school system, Union County, and they came up with what they deemed, at that time, 10 years. But we're already behind technically, because it started in 2020, and we didn't get a bond on the ballot. We do have to go to the county to have those approved to go on the ballot. So that's why it was called 10 years, but we're...
I got you.
We're already past 10. Yeah.
I understand.
Yeah.
Well, Dr. Rogers and Ms. McLamb and Kathy Hantel, thank y'all for coming. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for having us here.
And I hope you get it. What do you think your chances are? Pretty good? You hoping, got your fingers crossed?
No, it's never not. We've always got our bonds.
I mean, we're hopeful.
We're hopeful.
You know, $24 a year doesn't seem like a whole lot. If you break it down per month, it's $2 a month. So, you know, you can't even buy a hamburger for that anymore.
I know.
Anyway.
Thank you for having us here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us up to the ARPA-enabled recipient, recipients, I'm sorry. Adam?
So tonight, we have Union County Charter Education Association, and I wrote it down so that I would say it right. So we have two members here from Union County Charter Education Association to talk about their project from FY '24, and they may mention '25 as well. So, y'all can come on up.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Put this here for you guys to see. You got it? You're gonna hold it. Okay. Thank you all so much for allowing us to be here today. More importantly, thank you for your generous contribution that you made to the Union County Charter Education Association, and in turn, Union Preparatory Academy. My name is Lisa Buckley. I'm the Athletic Director at UPA. I serve as the Athletic Director for both the middle and the high school. I want to thank you all for all that you have done for my athletes. I want to thank Adam and Alicia for making the purchasing process an easy and seamless one. And I would also be remiss to not thank Mrs. Tricia Green here. She is the Head of the Board for the Association, and she just works tirelessly in advocating for our athletes at UPA. We currently offer 14 sports at UPA. With the ARPA funding, we were not only able to provide each team with new equipment, but we're also able to provide new uniforms for every team on campus. I know this doesn't sound like much, but I want to give you a little perspective onto the impact that you've had on the athletes at UPA. For many of the athletes that participate in our sports teams, this is the only jersey that they will ever wear. In today's pay-to-play society, many of our students cannot afford to play club sports. UPA is the only team that they will ever know. As a former college athlete, I can quite honestly say that being a part of a team was undoubtedly one of the greatest privileges of my life. So while many of you think that you just provided a few athletes with a jersey, much like this one I have here today, you went way beyond that. You provided a child with the opportunity to walk into a sporting arena feeling good about themselves. You gave them the self-confidence and meaning. You gave them a community that will hold them accountable. You gave them the opportunity to be a part of something bigger than themselves, and for that, I will forever be grateful. Thank you for all you do for this town and continue to do.
Thank you very much.
Questions?
What did you play? And this has no, what did you play?
I was a soccer player.
Soccer. Okay. And what sports do you have at Union Prep?
We currently offer soccer for both the high and the middle school, basketball for high and the middle school, cheerleading, cross-country, baseball, softball, and volleyball.
And where do you, where do you play?
We use Chestnut a lot. You guys have been great in allowing us to rent that at a price that is affordable to us. Cross-country, we run anywhere we can.
I bet.
And then on-campus for volleyball and basketball.
How about baseball?
Baseball, we go over to Crooked Creek.
Crooked Creek. Well, I'm glad we have those facilities.
Me too, me too. Very much so.
And those are very nice facilities, too.
They are. They are.
Thank goodness. Well, listen, you warmed my heart with, who do you, last question, who do you guys play? Who do you?
So, right now, we're in the middle school, we are in the Queen City Conference. So we do play schools like Charlotte Prep, Trinity Episcopal, Socrates, who am I missing? Carmel Christian.
But we play any similar schools that we can find, good matchups. We work really hard to find opportunities.
You're the same size-type schools I'm sure you're looking for.
And we're such a team to find each other, and people are willing to do it. I think some of you were here years and years ago, when I came to have you all help put us in the public school realm where we could use your facilities at a, the school rate, because we use them right after school. So, we have been able to take full advantage of that. And I will say, your Indian Trail Parks and Rec does better than anywhere we go. Your facilities in your parks, you're doing a great job. So keep it up. We're watching what you're doing over there at Chestnut, too. So, we are really grateful.
Well, that's great. I know Clarence has got a question, and I just want to offer, I gotta say one more thing. Anything I can do for you, let me know. Love sports and did a lot of coaching back in my lifetime.
Hey, we've got vacancies if you're looking.
And listen, no, call on me anytime.
Thank you, sir.
I would love to help you in always. Clarence?
I was just gonna make a comment. Lisa, are you nervous?
Always nervous.
Yeah. You did great, though. No, I was just gonna say, thank you for the investment that you make for the youth of the Indian Trail area. So, thank you for all that you did.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all for coming. Okay, brings us to public comments. I think we have one person on public comments tonight, Patrick Chang.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. I was here at the council meeting on the 10th, and I must say, it left a bad taste in my mouth. I thought there was a lot of accusations that were going across the board, some name-calling. And there are two things that kind of stood out to me that affected me most. One was, I saw my last name come up. And my last name is Chang. In my 18 years in Indian Trail, I've been a teacher, resident, and I've never seen my last name in any other location. So obviously, that was a concern. And then, this past week, I saw it appear again on a social media post. The second thing that caught my attention was this use of the term racial profiling. And I speak now as a former manager for cultural competence at two very large organizations here in North Carolina. So I would like, if you all have your phones on you, if you wouldn't mind maybe just taking it out and look up the definition of racial profiling. And I think the way it was used a couple of Tuesdays ago, and what again I saw on social media, is totally out of context and lacks understanding of what racial profiling means. So in saying that, again, my wife is African-American. My neighbor, Samantha Towns, God rest her soul, she passed away not too long ago, is also African-American. Samantha had a massive stroke, and the first person that I called was David Cone. David dropped whatever he was doing at home and came over to see Samantha. She was admitted to the hospital, and the two people that, when I went there, that were there holding her hands and praying for her were Monica and Dave Cone. So this term, racial profiling, or the use of this word, whether it's racist, I don't think it has a part in David's vocabulary. And I just want to make that clear, that I think, I call him a friend, I go so far as to call him a brother. And I have never heard him say anything that would come close to being racially prejudicial in any form or fashion. So what I'd like to say to you tonight is that I think, and on the social media post, I think they were asking for an apology. I think the person that needs or deserves an apology is our good mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Patrick. Anybody have anything to say? Any feedback? No? All right. Patrick, thank you for saying that. That brings us to, I keep, there we go, brings us to law enforcement update. Andy?
I always have to adjust this thing for some reason. Good afternoon. So again, I sent you guys the email. I hope you got it earlier with all of the stats in it. Just to hit the highlights on that, there were, in the month of September, we responded to 128 alarms, which are included in the total calls for service, which was 3,772 for the month of September. Out of that, we took 279 reports. Again, kind of an average month, nothing really spectacular. I know there were some concerns about some break-ins in Brandon Oaks. Our investigators are still working on those, don't have an update on that as of yet. But I did just want to mention tomorrow morning, we will be out on Poplin Road at Poplin Elementary for bike to school. So if you're in that area, slow down just a little bit. There're gonna be a bunch of youngins riding bikes to school. But we'll be out there early. I think that starts about 6:30. And also, we just wanted to give everybody an update. We will have some extra patrols for Halloween night. We'll be out in different communities on our side-besides and throwing out candy and having a big time. So, if you guys know of any, we've got several different locations that we're gonna be. But if you know of anybody or any places in particular that you want us to kind of visit, we'll try to get out to those as well. That's all we got.
Any questions for Captain Mullis? Captain, y'all doing outstanding job. And I'd like to say too, Captain, before you sit down, that you spent, what, eight days up in Asheville, and along with eight other, I think seven or eight other officers?
None of us, totally.
None of it.
Yeah, we left Sunday night and came back Friday.
Just wanted to thank you for your service, and appreciate everything. Him, you know, you forget, you know, us being here, and when I was talking to Captain Mullis, that, you know, he couldn't come back every night after working out there all day and take a hot shower. You told me there was a big garbage can in the middle of the hall, and you went out there with little buckets, and that's how, that was the water you drank, and you had no...
Well, we didn't drink out of them.
No.
No, but it was, so the hotel we stayed in did have power, but they didn't have any...
It did have power?
They did have power, but there was no running water at all. So you just, the room you had was what you had. And we had it a whole lot better than a lot of other folks. There's, those folks are gonna need a lot of help for a long time.
That's right. That's right. So you couldn't take a shower anyway, right? So you...
We were able to get one. There were some folks who brought in some mobile showers.
I hear ya.
So Thursday, Wednesday night and Thursday night was a glorious evening.
Thank you for what you did, Captain. Appreciate it. That brings us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor? Unanimous? Brings us to public hearings. Ms. Deese.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have two public hearings for tonight. We'll start with the first one, ZM 2024-0048, Culp Plumbing. And this is just a straight conventional rezoning, so no concept plan associated with this project. So the request before you is a half-acre portion of an existing RBD parcel, and the request is to change that to light industrial. Those zones are fairly similar, but not exactly the same. This is a portion of the property at 3427 Haywood Road that is actually used as residential, but it's, as you can see, a sizable lot at almost four acres. So this small portion we'll look at on the map in just a second, will be combined with the rear budding parcel in Star Crest and be developed for light industrial, for office, warehouse. And the applicant is William Culp. And property owners of the small parcel there, they're going to combine with the original parcel in Star Crest is harmless meters. So in yellow, you'll see on the map, the larger parcel on Haywood Road that is used as residential, zoned RBD. And then in the red is that small portion of that 3.8 acres that they're gonna combine with the Star Crest drive that you see in teal. So just to make that parcel a little bit larger, one of the things that we see is that most of our existing light industrial are mostly built out, and we're left with lots that maybe had some challenges. This one with the unique shape of it is part of the reason why it's one of the last ones left. And here's a couple of photos, street view, photo in front of the property on Haywood. Here's the current zoning map. You can see the darker bluish-purple is the RBD, and the regular purple is the light industrial. These zones are fairly similar, but the RBD does have some restrictions as far as light industrial development. Future land use sets this out as medium-density residential, and that was simply because the parcel included the home that's on it currently. So in summary, we have small exchange of land. Rezoned to light industrial is consistent with the existing conditions and the future land use recommendations. There's no significant zoning changes to the area. And on September the 17th of 2024, planning board unanimously recommend approval of this project. Your consistency findings, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan in the areas of economic development, goal number one, and land use goal number four. This rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest, because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the areas of economic development and land use. I have your action, requested action before you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions? I assume there's no applicant presentation?
That's correct.
And there's no one signed up for the public hearing, so can I get a motion to open and close public hearing?
Motion to open and close public hearing.
All in favor? Unanimous? Okay. All right. And if there's no council deliberation, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning map request, ZM 2024-0048 as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous?
And then I'll make a motion to adopt the statement of, the statement of consistency as read into the record by staff for ZM 2024-0048.
All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, Ms. Deese, next.
Thank you, sir. And our second public hearing is a conditional rezoning, 2023-0067 Indian Trail Daycare off of Rogers Road, and this does have a concept plan associated with it. So we're looking to conditionally rezone 3.6 acres at the intersection of Wesley Chapel and Rogers Road. The current zoning is SF1. The proposed zoning is conditional NBD, Neighborhood Business District. And the intent is to allow for daycare use on the property, reduce the number of required parking spaces, and to mitigate any appearance of spot zoning. We'll talk about that in just a second. Applicant is Tribec Properties. And here's the aerial map. This shows the subject parcel on the corner of Rogers and Wesley Chapel. Here's another site from Rogers. This is looking, this is from the property looking across the street. This is looking into the subject property. This is at the intersection. So current zoning, that beige just shows you the... So current zoning, that beige just shows you the SF1, what you do see is quite a bit of residential, however, there are uses within this proximity that are more commercial in nature, such as the schools and the traffic that they bring, so you have that Sun Valley cluster right there. Future land use sets it out to be medium density residential, however, how the parcels got sliced, it's not ideal on that corner lot for residential. So it's a vacant 3.6 acre wooded lot, we're proposing again to rezone it to allow for a daycare use, they are requiring, requesting a minimum number of parking spaces be reduced and mitigate the appearance of spot zoning. Future land use is medium density residential, and we're going to see ZMBD, you can see the neighboring zoning districts and uses. So while the conditional zoning, Neighborhood Business District may seem to be far away from the existing uses, again, there's more intensive uses, so it is planning staff's opinion that this, these existing zoning districts do not accurately represent the current land use in the area, we've listed those below for you. A proposed daycare center falls within the intent of the NBD zoning district, and it's much more suitable, we feel, than additional development that could occur by right on the property. So here's their concept plan, you'll notice the building, the parking out by Rogers Road, they've got tree preservation and landscape buffering, outdoor play areas, you can see the roadway improvements that are required, and they are increasing the landscaping and buffering, tree preservation areas above and beyond what the ordinance requires, and we're including that in a condition so that we can ensure that happens. This is a sample of what the proposed building would look like. And these are the technical building elevations that you may not be interested in, but we decided to include those. So we held two community meetings back in January, three residents were in attendance from nearby subdivisions, we answered questions, town staff was there to answer questions as well as the applicant. The concerns we heard were stormwater, flooding, drainage, traffic and safety, and the notification area being too small, I will say that is dictated by state law, and on September the 17th, 2024, Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request. We do have the proposed conditions here, if you'd like to go through those, a couple of the things that we've talked about are reducing the parking. Our code is very heavy on parking, we feel very strongly, and you'll see a lot of the patterns across the nation, there's even been codes that have eliminated parking altogether, but we feel that the end user knows their parking needs better than we do as planners, you know, they've, this is a national chain, they know what their parking needs are for this use. We are requiring them to increase that landscape buffering and tree preservation. There's the six foot sidewalk along the new development, and then the biggest condition here is the traffic improvements. So you'll notice that the case number on this was 2023, and the reason for that is is that they've spent a very long time working with NC DOT on all of their required improvements, and they are significant to this intersection. One other thing I did want to mention before we get to the consistency findings is that we did receive, on March 8th, 2024, we did receive a petition, and that was shared with council recently, and we went through and tried to verify all of the signatures, there was a total of 115 signatures, there were 92 that were verified, 22 we were unable to verify, and there was one duplicate. Staff feels like that since March, there's been a lot of changes, there's been a lot of the traffic improvements have come out, back in March, that was uncertain, and perhaps that's why at Planning Board, there wasn't really all that much public input, but we did want to make you aware of that petition. So the consistency findings, while the future land use recommendations differ from the proposed zoning, staffs have the opinion the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, it's reasonable and in the public interest because it promotes the goals of the comprehensive plan in the areas of community engagement, goal number one, land use and housing, goal number one, land use and housing, goal number four, and economic development, goal number And the requested actions before you, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have, thank you.
Clarence, is there an applicant here to speak tonight?
There's no applicant presentation, but the applicant is here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Clarence, I'm sorry.
You touched on the applicant's options, by right options, will you just expand on that, just so if anyone else is interested to know what their options are?
Sure. Councilmember Officer Brooks, that's a great point, so the current zoning, if I can get to the map, right here is SF1, that's 20,000 square foot lots, so approximately half acre lots, you could develop on the subject property by right, no rezoning needed.
Mr. Guy?
So single family one, right now is zoned for a single family, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Of course, we do have a lot of people on the petition, and their big concern is the amount of traffic that it's gonna put in there, and I guess one of the concerns I've got, but it could end up being confusing, but there's what, one entrance and one, just in and out?
Let's go back to the site plan. Yes, so you'll, they do have a, three lanes here, there was concern of some backup going into the site, and so they've made three lanes, but yes, one entrance, no access from Wesley Chapel's house.
That's like a deceleration lane.
They've got, yeah, they've got road improvements on both sides, so they'll have to lengthen this as well as, so all this gray is their road improvements.
Okay, so Wesley Chapel is way over here, so this is back where you're gonna have less activity going through that intersection.
Correct. And like I say, they've spent more than a year working with DOT, as well as Mr. Hunsinger on the access, the drive, and the road improvements that will be required.
One other question, how many children do they expect to have, what's their capacity gonna be, and just curious what kind of car volume that's gonna be coming in and out?
I will let the applicant speak to that, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Town Council, my name is Blanton Hamilton, I'm with Tribec Properties, we're the developer of this site. There'll be between 140 to 150 children, zero to four years old, so these are young children. We have about 20 teachers, I guess we would call them, or administrators, so the total count, if you include everybody, is around 170, assuming that's one trip per person, it's about 340. I think the DOT tables, they round it up to 500, so it's, I'd say the real count's about 350 a day, and the DOT mandated count's about 500.
Any other questions?
Mr. Barber? So there's only one entrance and exit from the facility on the Rogers Road.
That's correct.
And where you're coming out there on Rogers Road, is that two or three lanes?
It's three, one in and two out.
Yeah, I think, I think there's currently, the plan is to have a deceleration lane, I don't, okay, yeah, thank you.
I'll tell you what I told the Planning Board during this meeting they had about this project, so right now, that left turn lane out there, that's going on Wesley Chapel, going south out of town, is only 120 feet, all right, currently, so that's about five cars. They're building an extra 250 feet just to the entrance, so that's just to the entrance right here, right here, they're building an extra 250 feet, then they've built an extra 100 feet past the entrance, so you almost got 450 feet of additional left turn lane, and you didn't have 120 feet to begin with. Now wait, yeah, I'm sorry.
So you're putting in a turn lane?
Yeah, a turn lane, and they're quadrupling the distance, so you're going from five cars being able to store on that left turn lane to over 20. And the way DOT was so concerned about this intersection, that they ran their own data analysis called synchros, and that's why we had additional meetings about this project, because they were concerned about the backup to the entrance, because again, you're gonna have people trying to take a left out of there, and that's why they made them create a dual left turn lane storage right in there, so it's a three lane section, plus you've got the decel lane, so it's a four lane section out there. So their synchro analysis, they're gonna take this signalized intersection, add more time, or more phasing as far as the left turn signals, so they're gonna add more time for you to get through there. So when they ran that analysis, it didn't show cars backing up but to the entrance. So right now, the car's back all the way to the school, because there's no left turn lane there. But from their data analysis now, they're saying it's only gonna queue up to the entrance, and they've already added another extra 100 feet, they're making the daycare build. So you've got, again, you quadrupled the storage on that left turn lane, and the daycare has to pay for all that. Plus, all signals heads gotta be changed out, and they're adding some pedestrian friendly aspects, I don't really know what those are, I think they gotta change out the pedestal and stuff, but anyway, so they've gotta do all that, and they couldn't add a secondary entrance to Wesley Chapel, because it just wasn't feasible, because it's too close to the intersection, so that's why they only have one entrance, even though that was looked at, and they were willing to entertain that idea. Any questions?
How far is that entrance from the school entrance, the first one?
That I don't know.
The bus entrance?
No. What I can tell you is, they...
That's where the bus is coming?
Right. What I can tell you is, they were technically supposed to widen even more, but because of that pond on across the street that has that earth berm dam that overflowed sometimes, you couldn't do the widening all the way up there, so you see how they're having to kick that widening out in a short distance? That's the reason why, because there's no way to widen out that road any further, because you're gonna impact that earth dam, and there's no way we're doing that.
Yeah, Todd, there were some concerns from the residents about stormwater, can you address that?
Yeah, so, again, just a refresh on stormwater with these detention ponds, you have a preexisting condition out there with trees and everything that's out there now with runoff, right? They have to, that pond is supposed to capture that preconsist condition and make it better, meaning disperse it out within two to four days, which it's not doing right now, but it probably is because you got a lot of trees and it's slowing down the runoff, right? So, so as far as this development, that's not gonna impact, because again, they're doing the detention better than the precondition. Now, I will tell you, Union County, Wesley Chapel, I think, I came to y'all a few months ago about that, us at Wesley Chapel and Union County is doing a flood study in the area, and that's because Wesley Chapel folks further down are being impacted, and we don't know what, we're not sure what's causing it. So there's two areas we're looking at, it's this area where the pond is across the street, and a little bit further, because that's how the drainage pattern goes, and then that's why all that creek, and these folks are seeing more, I don't know why, but they're saying they're seeing more runoff in that creek now. So we're gonna take a look at that, but that, this daycare whatever won't be affected by that, study wise, again, it's doing the same as the precondition, so it doesn't make, it doesn't matter as far as that goes with the additional impervious. But we are gonna look at that and see if we can do, if we can do anything about it, I don't know if it's just, you know, maybe cleaning up the creek, I just don't know what that flood study's gonna do, but I've got to do RFQ interviews this week, and then once we select that, we'll get a contract together, and then they'll start doing the study, but that, we don't know anything at this point.
Dennis?
Very familiar with that pond there, have you had, when these torrential rainstorms come in?
Yeah.
Do you have any spillage coming over that dam, and is that a area where the water congregates on the road?
Yeah, well, I believe it has before, but I've never had a call, just somebody just in fear of water going over the road right there. They haven't personally called me, they might have called DOT, but they hadn't called my office, so I don't know of any particular time it has, I'm sure it has, but I do know, I talked to the state a while back about it, because I had a citizen concerned about it, it does get inspected, I think every two years, by the state, Moore's Office, DWQ Moore's Office, and they write a report and give it to that landowner. Now, supposedly, they're supposed to be doing improvements to that, but I don't think DWQ's actually enforcing those reports, so I don't know, I don't think it's, nothing's ever been done, you look at out there, they ain't touched that thing in years, so I don't, can't really tell you what, how that works, because I'm not in that business, but I do know they do inspect it every two years.
Any other questions? Quick question, I gotta, go ahead, do you have another question?
I just have a comment. I wouldn't be able to go along with this at all if they hadn't done all those deceleration lanes and turn lanes and whatever, so it looks like they're doing significant work to handle the traffic coming through there.
Yeah, and just so you know, this didn't trigger DOT TIA, it triggered our TIA.
Right.
And so we obviously allowed DOT to review it, because it's DOT roads surrounding it, and in regards, if it didn't trigger TIA, I said it didn't trigger TIA to us, that driveway, new driveway they're putting out there, DOT would have, it would have warranted at least the right decel lane, so they would have had to build that anyway, but for us, fortunate for us, it did trigger TIA, and so they're having to do significant improvements.
And that intersection, the way you're changing the lights and all that, is gonna slow the traffic down even more?
Well, it's just gonna allow more people to be able to turn lefts, you know, and stuff like that, and, you know, try to decrease the stacking that's happening right now, that's really the main goal.
That's more accurate than I meant, yeah.
Yeah, and to protect the lefts and all that, to where, you know, you don't have to sit there and wait for something to come straight through, you actually have a straight green left more than not.
There's no more questions, there was one quick question. Did I understand you right to say, with all the improvements made, that the runoff and the storm runoff and the water was actually gonna be better after they built it?
It's not, it's not better, it's just basically, what happens is, it's all sheet flowing right now throughout, back to that creek, right, the whole property, and it's probably doing it as a little bit of a lesser rate, when you put that pond in, all that's being concentrated and stored, and then you have one pipe that's gonna be in the end, dumping into that, you know, well, off the creek, but right at it, and that pond basically drains and takes it two to four days to drain, so you're gonna see water continuously running for four days, but that's, but, and so that's how, basically that's how the tension works. So they may see a difference in a sense, so they may see more water coming through the creek, more of extended timeframe, because they're obviously probably not seeing it now, because you've got so much overgrowth in there, a lot of it's probably getting absorbed as well, you know, obviously that's not gonna happen now, because it's gonna be concentrated to one point. But again, that's the whole point of trying to do it better than the preconsist, preconsistent condition.
Gotcha, okay, that's...
If that makes sense.
Yeah, it does, I just kinda heard you say that in your...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can I ask one more quick question?
Go ahead.
I see what you're bringing is the traffic coming toward Old Monroe Road, you've got that lane there where they're gonna turn right to go in on the Rogers Road, but how are you handling the volume of traffic coming from Monroe Road that's turning left?
From Monroe's taking a left?
Yeah, I mean Rogers is running this way, Wesley Chapel's...
Well, yeah, the only thing you're doing is, again, you're trained, DOT is telling these guys that they have to change the sequencing of the lights to ensure that you can provide somewhat of a break so these people can get out to the left, so I don't know how all that's gonna work, but I'm just saying, that's, that's the... But I'm just saying that's, that's the intent is allow more people to get through the intersections so they don't stack as much. And also make sure you can kind of phase it to where you can provide gaps so these people can get out of this place too.
But you see what I'm saying? You've got the deceleration lane going toward Wesley Chapel.
Okay.
Coming in, handling that amount of traffic. But you don't have a deceleration lane or extra lane there to handle the people turning left going into it from, coming from Monroe Road. Where people are coming from work.
Well, there's an existing left turn lane on Old, I mean, on Wesley Chapel Road to take a left on Rogers. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is an existing left turn lane. They're not, they're not, they're not having to add extra storage to that left turn lane, no.
Okay, but there's going to be an extra turn lane?
They're going to, no, there's a turn lane already there. But they're going to phase the light, the signaling to allow that to, again, I don't know how Wesley Chapel is going to work. More, we're more concentrating on how Rogers Road is going to work with the signaling to make sure, again, people can get in and out and can store and get out of the left turn lane. I'd have to get back to you to explain to you about Wesley Chapel. Because that's, that DOT looked through all of that, that's not me, so.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, if that's, is any other, anybody else?
You got to open and close.
I'm going to, I'm going to open, yeah. Yeah, there's nothing else. So can I get a, I actually have two participants who want to come up and speak. So can I get a motion to open?
Motion to open public hearing.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. That brings us to Blayton, is it Hamilton? That's you, have you already, have-
I'm just here to answer questions.
You're here, okay. All right, so you're not speaking. All right, is that Laney Cole? Did I say, is that right? Is it Laney?
No, it's Lynn.
Lynn. All right, I'm going to make you look at this how you signed in.
No, L, Y, N, E.
Okay.
Correct and proper feminine spelling for Lynn.
Okay, got you. It's just, I can't read, so.
And I don't have good handwriting. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm going to have the same comments pretty much that I had at the planning board meeting a few weeks ago. And several of you have brought this up. Looks like there's a lot of improvements on Rogers Road, not much on Wesley Chapel. Wesley Chapel is a parking lot now during school drop off and pickup at the three schools that are already there. There's two or three small daycares within the area. The lights are a mess. The left turn lane at Rogers Road, I don't go that way, so I don't really notice it. But it's not a very long one, so we were talking about stacking cars. There's, there's nothing for Wesley Chapel. And it's already a parking lot, several hours each day during school.
Thank you. Okay, so can I get a motion to close public comments?
I'll make a motion to close public comments.
All in favor? Unanimous? All right, any council deliberation or anybody else want to say anything? All right, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional rezoning request CZ 2023-0067 as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous?
And now I'll make a motion to adopt the statement of consistency as read into the record by staff for CZ 2023-0067.
All in favor? Unanimous? All right, thank you, thank you, Brandy. This brings us up to old business, Public Works Space Needs Study update. Mr. McLamb and I, I would like to tell everybody tonight, Mr. McLamb is our acting town manager tonight. So he's our assistant town manager. But also, he is also our town manager while Mike's recovering.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, Mayor and Council. Really quick, we're going to go through just a little bit of an update for y'all on the Public Works Needs Space Study. Just to kind of keep y'all up to date on where we are with that project. And then that'll also, that'll also allow y'all a little bit more information as we roll into in the next several meetings. We are going to have an update with the consultant coming in to give y'all a lot more information. So we'll just talk a little bit about the purpose for this, the goals, the RFQ process that we went through. And then council approval and then our actual consultant right now that's doing the work. So kind of following from left to right on the screen. Prior to the RFQ going out, you know, we looked at what do we need from a public works facility? How many people are we going to need in the future? What's that need going to look like as the town continues to grow and expand? What do we need now that we don't know about? Those are the types of questions and the purpose and the reason why we wanted to get a consultant on board. And council was gracious enough to say, yes, that would be a good thing to do. So we went out with an RFQ. Council approved C Design in May of this year to be the consultant for that project. So we kicked off that project with them in June of 24. After that kickoff meeting, an internal team went and did a couple of site tours with C Design to look at some facilities that they had built in other locations and see what those were. Once we did that, then we would, had several meetings with them to talk through what was going on, what we saw, what we liked, what we didn't like. They then took that information and in coordination with us, looked at programming for this facility. Again, answering those goals and the purpose for doing the study. Looked at the programming for what the facility may need in the future. That programming leads you into your space that you actually need for your site. Coming out of that, they've done some site due diligence. If all of y'all remember, we were, after three and a half years of working with NC DOT, we were given, it's about sixteen acres. Thirteen of that is usable property. But we were given some property on Indian Trail Fairview. They started doing site due diligence on that site, looking at conceptual design plans. We've been through several iterations of those from July through September. I'll jump to the bottom here in a second, but I'm going to continue through to where we are today. So today, actually, just previously before this meeting today, we had a follow up meeting with them talking about schedule here going forward. Starting to look at what the potential cost could be for this facility based on square footage, things like that. They were looking to bring that information back to council sometime in late October, maybe at the next meeting in October or in November. They'll be looking to bring that information back to council. So now let's jump to the bottom of that. We have also, at the same time, we're running another track with a different consultant that is working with us to do the site survey and do the site combination. Because if you remember, when we got the property from DOT, it's five separate parcels. We need to combine all those parcels and then bring them to Brandy so she can allow us to zone them and bring them into the town. Because two of them are actually in unincorporated Union County. So that walks us through to where we are today. Like I said, in the next couple of weeks, y'all will be hearing from the consultant. But I wanted y'all to have a baseline before y'all heard from the consultant to understand. They didn't just start yesterday. They've worked for six months now to get to what they're going to bring here in a couple of weeks. Any questions?
Thank you, Adam. And now you can tell us about ARPA update.
So for ARPA update, I don't have a PowerPoint, but we'll just talk through a couple of things. We'll walk through where we were at overall ARPA funding. If y'all remember, there's about 1.3 million dollars still left sitting out there in that infrastructure bucket we've talked about several times. Todd and his team actually have a project on the streets that's open for bid right now to fulfill that in stormwater projects. It's a group of projects that they've put together that will allot for those funds. We will get those to y'all in November for approval. Because we have to have them obligated, if y'all remember, by December 31st of this year. So we're hitting towards the end of that timeline to have them obligated, but we're going to get there. As we look at FY24 funds that were given out to the community, those interest dollars that we worked with the community with. One of those projects was for Hemby Bridge Elementary School. One of the items that they asked for was their PTA or PTO. Asked for chairs and stands for their auditorium. Those stands that they put the chairs on actually started falling apart after a very early use. So part of the team went back to them and talked to them, to the, to Amazon to see if they would be willing to refund that and let us purchase something different after several, several conversations. Eventually, that happened. But the new ones that were purchased were just a little bit more expensive. So one of the motions that we would like for y'all to do tonight is to allot some of the interest dollars that we've had come in since we did our last allotment of projects. We're only talking about three or $400, but we just need to make that, that whole. So we need to do that. As we look at FY25, the ARPA enabled dollars that were in that area. Everything that y'all programmed has started moving forward with the exception of two projects. One of those, we're working with the applicant to start working on. And the other one is delayed just because they're waiting a little bit longer in the school year to get started on that one. Two projects that we need to ask for a tweak on the funding with, with the FY25 projects are the Union County Charter of the Firefighters Burn Children's Fund. One of their requests, we already do. And after looking through their request a little bit more, they wanted to change about $2,000 worth of their request. It doesn't require any more funding from y'all. It's just we want y'all to be aware that we're going to go from providing recycling carts to they want to purchase some burn equipment for when they have children that come in that are burned. It's wraps, it's gauze pads, it's, you know, things to put on people's hands, those type things. And then earlier tonight, y'all heard from Union County Charter Education Association. So through this award this year, they were, it was a 15 passenger van. We were actually able to get a better price than what they were originally able to get. And they would like to just use some of those funds that are left over to roll back into their sports programs to purchase more balls, more uniforms, more sporting goods type of equipment for the school. So with all that, the three different things that we need to get approval tonight on are to use, to reallocate the interest dollars for the Hemby Bridge Elementary School. And then for the two projects, Union County Charter of the Firefighters Burn Children's Fund and Union County Charter Education Association, just allowing us to allow them to spend those funds a little bit differently than what they originally asked for.
Now, do you need a nod of heads on that?
I do, I would prefer a motion would make it a lot cleaner.
You want one on all of it?
Just one for all of it.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
With what Adam just said.
Sounds great.
With what Adam just said, would you, would somebody like to say, I'd like to make a motion on what Adam just said on all three of those?
Yes, I will.
Ditto.
I'll make motion on what Adam just presented, approving what Adam just presented.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
You.
Is that okay?
Trina, are you okay or can you and I? Okay.
All right, now, water lines. Are we at?
Yep.
Okay.
So water line update. Mike provided y'all in your council packets a memo on the water line updates. I'll very quickly do the highlight of it. And then if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them. So Emerald Woods Water Line, they are actively going to construction. By the end of the year, they will be putting the line in the ground. They're a couple of months behind schedule from what we originally thought. Took a little bit longer to get some easements that they were looking for and working with DOT to get some of the plans drawn up. But they have a contractor and they are moving forward on it. We expect after conversations with them, we didn't know how they were going to bill us because remember, it's a 50/50 partnership between us and them. They are going to wait till the project is completely done and then submit one bill to the town for payment. Any questions on Emerald Woods? All right. More Park Water Lines, if you remember, that was a project that we originally were going to fund a portion of the design through FY24 ARPA enabled dollars. And it didn't move forward quite as fast as what we were looking for it to happen. We reallocated those funds. So then Union County decided that they would bring that project in-house and do it as an in-house design, not charging the town for that design. They would do it themselves. So they are in the process of working through that design. They have approved that they will do that, fund that project in their FY26 CIP. So they will be getting information to us in the spring of FY25, or the spring of '25 so that we can start those negotiations and conversations of what our portion will be for that project.
Adam?
Yes.
So, and I read about that in our work. And so we're going to work on design next year, or they're going to work on the design next year, correct?
They are already working on design right now.
But it's not going to start till the year '26? Do you know where, when in '26?
We don't know that yet because we'd have to get through design, an agreement between us and the county, bid it out and then go to construction. But the hope right now is to go to construction in '26. That is, everybody's plan is to go to construction in FY26.
How long did it take, how long did it take Emerald Woods? Are we like on the same?
Emerald Woods, it took us-
I know, because it's taken quite, quite a long time there.
Yeah, I'm trying to think back to design was roughly six months. Negotiation agreement was three or four months. Yeah, about a year. And then construction will be about six months, give or take.
It just seems back quite some time, like two years ago when we started.
When we started that conversation.
Or at least maybe more than two years ago when we started that conversation. That's just a, it's just a government.
It is a long process. What I would say is it is on the county's radar. It's on council and you as the mayor's radar and it's on staff's radar. So we are continuing to push it forward. We're trying to make sure that it stays that way. As we're working on some other documents to bring to y'all in the not too distant future, we're incorporating it into the cost of those documents as well. So we are trying to keep it at the forefront.
That's, and I'd like to remind council, if you get a chance, to talk to a county commissioner to remind them, you know, hey, guys, we need this thing done as quickly as possible. And I see them from time to time. And believe it or not, the barbecue's coming up in January. It'll be here before you know it. You'll see them all there and be a good time to speak to all of them and just keep reminding them that, and maybe we need to go back up there and talk to them again and remind them again and again. But we need, we need to get that, get it done.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, all right. I appreciate all your work, Adam, and all the keeping up with all that stuff. Okay, that brings us to deep, possible violations of elected officials' code of ethics and code of conduct by Mayor Pro Tem Dennis Gay. This is a continuance and I'll turn it over to council member Barber.
Well, I guess we tabled it. I don't know if Mr. Gay wants to just apologize, say he put up some stuff that wasn't accurate or if he wants to answer it. So I'll leave it up to whatever Mr. Gay wants to do.
Well, things are very simple. There's nothing to apologize for because there's a lot of distortions in this. Shortly after we started our process to investigate Mr. Barber, all the things that he's got here that he based everything on disappeared. He apparently went through and erased it all. Or he froze a lot of people out. He also blocked me from seeing any of the stuff that he had on those pages. And when I look at these copies of where I had addressed he or Mr. Pettit, he took out the name of whatever name he was going by at the time and covered it up. And it only shows my name, doesn't show the Weasel Report or elect Todd Barber. So what he's done, he basically went through and butchered everything on his social media page that he had been copying all this stuff about. So I think that if anybody deserves an apology, it should be me for the things that Mr. Barber has pulled in the past on his social media pages. And if we'd like to go through all these, I'll address them all if you all would like to see them.
Well, I don't know if anybody wants to see them or not. I'd, to be honest with you, I'd, you know, I'd like to move on with this. And if, and if Mr. Barber wants to do an investigation, we can do an investigation. If Mr. Barber doesn't want to do an investigation, then we can put that up to the council and the council can- and the council can, can, can do that. Mr. Barber, uh, can, would you like for this to go on, or do you wanna?
I don't think the public's interested, I, I just wanna move on.
Okay, all right, can I, uh, miss, did, would, does anybody, it's got down here, motion needed, does anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion, sir. I make a motion to squash this. Uh, the citizens don't wanna hear about it. It's, um, it's two individuals having confrontation. Um, I believe that we just need to nip it in the bud and move forward. That's my motion.
All right, so this is to nip, as, as...
Barney Fife.
Exactly what I was gonna say, as Barney Fife would say, nip it, nip it in the bud.
All in favor?
All in favor? Okay, uh, that's four votes, uh, okay, Mr. Barber, you, okay, Mr. Barber, Mr. Amburgi, uh, Mr., Miss, Miss Crystal, and Clarence, all for this?
I'm opposed.
And, and Mr. Gay's opposed, and he wants an investigation.
If anybody in the public would like to see any of this stuff, I'll readily make it available.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, all right, that brings us to, there's no new business, no new, just get no discussion items, um, no closed session, let's see, managers' update. Uh, Adam, do you have anything for?
So, I'll go through just a few things, um, y'all received, and it was posted online, the updated managers' report. Couple of things that you would see in there, it's just some training that's been going on for staff. Um, also, uh, the mayor, town manager, planning director, and communications director met with the new EDC board, um, with Union County, uh, to bring up some things that the town's looking at. Keep in mind, the town is, uh, and Abby's doing a good job pushing this out a lot, uh, looking due to a virtual blood drive, um, for, again, for our neighbors up in the western part of the state that are needing those things, uh, right now. Uh, we have an upcoming Facebook Live, um, on October 16th with Keith Adams with the executive director of Common Heart. Park and Rec, uh, has out their field reservations through June, for January through June for Chestnut Square Park. They're accepting applications right now. Um, they are looking to finalize their program and events guide, uh, for FY25, so I know Hayden, I think, had reached out. If y'all do have any ideas that, things that you would like to see happening in the town, if y'all wanna reach out to him, myself, or Mike, we get that information to him. And then the feasibility study is ongoing for the business plan and the feasibility for the multi-generational community center. So, if you do wanna take part in that, if you haven't yet, you can reach out and get that time scheduled. Uh, last but not least, Todd is gonna come up and talk for just a minute about the transportation master plan. Oh, okay, he went to print something, so can we go to what's coming up and, what's coming up at future council meetings, and then when he gets back?
Sure.
All right, thank y'all. Um, at the next council meeting, y'all are gonna see, Todd talked earlier today about we have our own TIA policy. We need to make a, a slight tweak to that. It'll be in the, on the consent agenda, uh, coming up at the next council meeting. Um, we also will be talking about Old Monroe Road betterments, um, wrapping up the Public Works Need Space Study, which we, I talked about earlier. Um, and then, what we talked about, what I said when we were working on other plans, and we have the water line included in that Public Works Need Space Study, is we're looking at getting y'all an all-encompassing CIP for all the projects that are going on to help us and council in future, how do we plan to do all these projects that we've been talking about for all this time? How are we gonna actually fund these projects? How can we actually make them all come to fruition? Um, and then Todd will be bringing those stormwater projects back for the ARPA dollars to get that approved. And there he is. All right, I'll pass these out.
Sorry, I forgot to print one thing, um...
Did you go print all these things?
No, no.
Are these all ours individually, or?
Yeah, that's your words.
That's what I said.
So, so the top por, portion is a Q and A. What we wanted to do was, is, we had a lot of comments in our online surveys for our transportation master plan where people were wondering why we selected, the intersection we selected when there's, uh, all these other intersections need improvements. And I, I guess, some people still hasn't grasped what's going on in town as far as transportation improvements and stuff, and so we wanted to kinda give, um, give the reasons why we did what we did, and then give the reasons, uh, or show what intersections are being improved by DOT projects and some town projects, and so vice versa, so it's just a little bit more education for the citizen, as well as y'all, while y'all are reviewing the plan. So, um, so just a little bit about the plan, real quick, hot, some highlights. Again, we did two online surveys. Um, we did a public engagement, we did one online survey for y'all. I don't know if y'all remember or not, but I sent that out to y'all, get comments back. We, uh, we actually interviewed the city of Monroe because they got a lot of development going on on the east side of town. I don't know if y'all aware of Long Seacrest Shortcut Road, Seacrest-Shortcut Road, and so we wanted to get an idea with them, with their TIAs and stuff, to figure out what those impacts were. Um, and we reached out to a couple other members of the community. There were four stakeholder meetings out, uh, the town did, the stakeholders meeting, the, the people, um, that, um, that represented that meeting was one Union County Transportation Planner, UNC DOT Transportation Planner, CRTPO staff, and, uh, me and Brandy, uh, directors, and, uh, Arsenate, our third-party consultant. Um, now, remember, due to rising costs with the way you have to do with road widening these days, there's no, there's no reason for the town to try to concentrate on that. Uh, 'cause in a sense of, we're, as a town, we can't finance to go build a two-lane to four-lane roadway. It's just not in the cards. So, what we wanna do as staff is concentrate on intersection improvements, because at least in a cost share, remember the 80-20 split with federal dollars, at least in a cost share aspect, it's, it's better, uh, it's more likely to absorb a $3 to $15 million project than it is to, to $20 to $100 million project. It's just, it's just not in the cards for the town. And so, even though we do have, um, projects in the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, the, um, the, uh, what we call a CTP, which is our local plan, we do have projects there, and we'll, we'll keep them, uh, keep monitoring those and keep submitting those as they come, and you see that in the spreadsheets on the plan where we talk about that. We just didn't wanna concentrate on, you know, getting a concept together, getting estimates together, we wanna do that with the, the intersections. So, that's why we've selected three intersections, you'll see that in the plan, um, that we would like to try to pursue in the future. Talked about that, talked about that. All right, so, the only thing that you, uh, will see that's not technically cleaned up yet is the appendixes. You have three, four of them, you have A, B, C, and D. I created one late in the game, uh, last week, uh, to the consultant, because I wanted to show in one of the appendix what all the improvements are in town. So, just to, again, just to reiterate to the citizens and everybody else, okay, look, these are the projects that are happening in town right now that are fully funded. So, that was the extra appendix I, I wanted to do. So, uh, the consultant didn't have time to get all that prepared, so a little bit, uh, that'll be cleaned up after the fact on the final plan, but again, that's just an informational piece, that ain't really anything y'all have to make a decision on, as far as the adoption's concerned. Um, uh, just trying to stay on the, right away, uh, the consultant's schedule. We, uh, right now, the current schedule is, y'all take two weeks to review it, come back on the 22nd. We request to adopt it unless there's a tremendous amount of comments from y'all or from the public. We are gonna take it out to the public tomorrow, so the public will be able to make comments as well, uh, even though they, we've done two rounds of online surveys, we still want them to, to see the draft plan, and if they wanna provide any comments, and they'll have that Q and A, um, document as well, they can, they can look at. And for some reason, come October 22nd, y'all feel like y'all need more time, it's not a big deal. We can always push it to November, but if we push it beyond the, the first meeting in November, then just so y'all know, we're, we're gonna get to a point where we're gonna get over budget. Uh, we're right at, we're right at the finish line as far as that goes, and if we go over that amount, remember, this is a $150,000 plan, and we're only paying 20% of it. So, if we go over the 150, we have to pay that extra full price. So, just be aware of that, um, as we continue to move forward, and if we keep delaying the, the adoption, and we keep having to add, you know, improvements to it or comments to it, you know, that takes the consultant back to have to do more work, so just be aware of that. Any questions?
Clarence?
I have a general question, just in looking at this catalog here.
Yes.
Um, do you know if roundabouts are made for expansion or designed for expansion? Let's say the one on Old Monroe Road, if the, you know, you go, you have a roundabout at a one-lane going each direction, and it, traffic increases, it needs to go to two lanes each way?
Yeah, yes, they can expand a roundabout from one to two lanes, but once it goes from two lanes, I don't know if they've got a plan beyond two-lane roundabouts right now. Um, and, and unfortunately, roundabouts, they're good right now, but once they get to capacity, I don't think there's a plan, what, what are you gonna do? I mean, it, it gets to be like a widening project, you're gonna intersection project, you can't widen intersections so much. So, eventually, you're just gonna be waiting in line.
So, that might be something to bring up at CRTPO or ask NC DOT, 'cause...
Yeah, because again, I don't think, I haven't seen a presentation on, you know, figuring out how to fix something, you know, in, in 2050 that gets over capacity, so unfortunately.
You may not have the answer, but, and I haven't looked at this, but I was on the other side of the state, and, um, they're putting in a lot of four-way stop signs, I mean, in, in places that are like high-traffic roads.
Yeah.
Is, they moving away from roundabouts, you think, to that, or is that, you think, I hope that's not coming here, do, I mean, is that part of the plan?
I think it's, I think it's an intermediate, uh, reaction, uh, not reaction, but because it, a four-way stop usually is caused of crashes more than it is because of, of speeding or anything else. So, they probably have a plan to improve the intersection in the future, but they can't right now, and so that's just the, an easier way to, to stop the critical crashes from happening, if, if they, if it's, if it's gotten to enough of a threshold.
Hopefully, a temporary.
It's a, yes, yeah, because again, they, they can't do so much based on their budget, so I think that's what it is, more than anything. And if they get any more, if they get enough complaints, trust me, it, the stop sign probably goes away, but, uh, like it did in 28, on 218. Go ahead.
I apologize, I was getting ready for, um, my presentation, so I did the good chance to ask this about, uh, Porch Park, and I'll talk to Mr. Drummond here, really, and have a discussion, so I can slip this in. Um, I know that we gotta review that culvert, uh, they're going up from down here to, to frontier.
Yes.
And I know, I think you said it's gonna cost possibly over a million dollars.
Correct.
Correct that. And, uh, the question was, how does this affect the water going in there?
We've al, we've already talked to the county, and we're gonna put, we're gonna put a casing pipe underneath the culvert, so while we're building it, we'll put a casing pipe in there, and so all they can do, all they do is slip that pipe, that ductile iron pipe, whatever they're gonna use, into that casing. What you do is you use like a three-legged spider, the, the brace it, and you just slide that pipe through it, and so, we're gonna go ahead and put that 16-inch casing underneath the road, so that's not an issue.
So, culvert, which is gonna come first, and shit gonna be added, well, uh, I guess you'll have to do the culvert before the water comes through.
Yeah, I don't think the water's gonna make it, I mean, we're, we're gonna bid out that culvert project next year, so, yeah, we're gonna have that culvert in before that waterman gets there.
How, it was on one entrance frontier circle, so how will they get, get in and out?
We gotta build a temporary road. Temporary shoulder. Basically, we gotta widen the shoulder to be able to do half the project, and then switch it over, and so it's, it's not gonna be fun, by no means.
Any other questions?
I, I will say one thing Adam mentioned, this is a little bit different than the PEP plan. We, we don't have to go back to CRTPO for approval. Once you adopt this plan, it's adopted. We don't have to go back and get the, give them the review or anything, it's, it's a done deal. They've had a staff in the, again, the stakeholder meetings, they've reviewed it already, so once you adopt it, it's, it's in...
Okay, Todd, thank you.
All right.
Todd?
Do we have potential for CRPT money once we pass this, because in the budget, we don't have any under revenue, any budget of future CRPT money right now.
Right, well...
Could that, could that come in this fiscal year, possibly?
What do you mean, as far as going after a project?
I mean, could we possibly get CRTPO money more?
Yeah, yeah, what...
Enhances our odds by passing this.
Yeah, I, I did wanna bring that up to, tonight, I was gonna bring it up to the next meeting, but I, since you, since you asked, that's fine. Uh, one of the intersection projects we would like to go after is the Stinson-Harless and Yonk Road intersection. Unfortunately, that is the most expensive one out of the three, but due to the crash data and stuff, it's the most critical one to tackle than the other two. Um, but it is a hefty price tag, so I would, I would come back to y'all to ask to see if y'all would want to tackle that, but internally, we need to make sure we can finance the 20% as well, so, uh, we're gonna look into that until next meeting, but yes, I will ask, if you wanna try to, or if you don't, we can always push it to the next, uh, call for projects, which would be next fall, not this fall. But yeah, we're gonna try to slide it in there if we can, if you allow me to do that.
I'd like to see you do it, but, yeah, but, you know, I don't get a vote on it, so it doesn't matter. Anyway, any other, any other questions? Well, good, well, thank you, Todd.
All right.
You did a great job. I guess, are we down to, uh, I think, Adam, you're done, right? You kinda skipped over your part, and I just wanna add, Adam, you did a, you did a really good job tonight, you, thank you for, for all you do, and, uh, Melanie, it's you.
Councilmember Amburgi?
Yes, I just wanna, everybody to remember the people in the western North Carolina, I've been up there four times, it's pretty, pretty rough, but, uh, God bless them and pray for the folks coming, or the, for the hurricane that's going towards Florida. My daughter lives in Orlando, she's not listening to me, but anyways, um, pray for everyone. God bless everyone.
Councilmember Alsa Brooks?
Thank you everyone for coming out. Um, I wanna say thank you to the citizens of Indian Trail that brought the disaster relief donations downstairs. Beautiful to see all those donations, uh, to the town manager and GM, get well soon. Rotary Club is having a drawdown October 19th, you can check out their Facebook page for any information. Also, um, just wanted to, um, shout out a local person, um, Harless Meadows, Meadow, Metter's name was mentioned tonight for the cult plumbing, uh, rezoning, and for you, those of you don't know Harless, he, um, great guy, um, he graduated from Sun Valley in 88, so he graduated right before I went into Sun Valley, and, uh, before there was a Sam Howell, there was a Harless, and he, um, set the state record in pole, uh, what was it, chalk puttin' disc, and, uh, just a great guy, went on to be a, the coach, track coach at, uh, UNC Chapel Hill, and he coached at, uh, Florida State, and also assistant coach at, uh, Chapel Hill, just a great local guy who did well and, uh, made Indian Trail look good. And then the last thing is, my granddaughter's birthday is today, so I wanna wish Ashley Udi a happy birthday, and I love you. Uh, everybody else, have a good night.
Councilmember Brigade?
Unfortunately, Captain Mullis took off before I could thank him and the other deputies for going up to the mountains and helping, uh, those folks who are going through, here he comes. Uh, Captain Mullis, thank you for you and your guys going up to, uh, Asheville and helping with that disaster up there. I was telling him earlier, um, I can't believe how many private helicopters are here in North Carolina, because they all flew in there one time, and, uh, they, they won't hear this thanks, but, uh, to them and all the other citizens who have gone up there and taken food and that sort of thing, um, you know, I'm sure those people are just delighted to see them. So, anyway, thank you all for coming, and, uh, have a safe trip home, and hope you'll come back next, uh, next meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Buholick?
Thank you all, drive safe, and hope to see y'all next time.
Councilmember Barber?
I'd like to give a shout-out to, uh, First Baptist Church, and they held a, uh, community prayer last week, and there was hundreds of people there, and our western North Carolina needs a lot of prayers, and I, I appreciate Town Hall and all the Food for Families, and First Baptist, Hemby Bridge Fire, and I think Common Heart, and all the different ones who, and VFW that have been donation locations. I mean, there's a lot of people sending supplies up there, and, you know, and there's a lot going on, you know, sheriff's departments from the state have sent people up there and fire, and really appreciate ours, people doing that. Um, so, a lot of prayers and thanks and going on, and of course, the media... So a lot of prayers and thanks, and going on, and of course, the media up there, the local ones have been really covering it, and it's just stories after stories where they walk into an area, and there's two hundred people in a church that they hadn't got to yet, and, you know, and, so you might want to read to a target Democrat, they got a good, not that I got a family member there, but anyway, so, but, but just a lot of prayers and people doing all that. Freedom Biker Church here in Indian Trail and Wesley Chapel Stout Road has a cruise in on Saturday, if you're interested in that. Well, and God bless everybody, thank you, and have a great evening.
Mayor Combs?
Okay, just a few things I'd like to touch on real quick, and I don't know if council knows this, I know there was a mention that we had a meeting with the EDC last week, Chris Plata is no longer the head of, is the head of that organization, and that's why we met with them, so had a great meeting, I think it's a bright, a bright future there, just to let you guys know that. I also, you know, staff, you did a great job, you know, we're without our town manager, who we're all thinking and praying for, I know he's getting better quickly, but I know, I'm saying this in a good way, Mike, we didn't miss you tonight, in the fact that you guys all did your job, and, you know, I got to give him some kudos for leaving it that way. Thank you all for what you did, you did an outstanding job, you know, all the way from Alicia in accounting, Brandy, you did superb, Adam, you did a great job, Trina, you know, you know, I don't want Mike to think we don't need him, but we do, but at the same time, you guys are fantastic, Carrie, Todd, Abby, Bobby, and Melanie, thank you, just thank all of you for what you are, you are the best staff that money can buy, so, and I mean that in a good way, you're, I didn't mean that in a bad way, you are the best, and thank you for making us look good, every bit, every one of us look good. I'd like, Mr. Chang, I'd like to thank you for your words tonight, I appreciate you more than you know, just to come in and say that, it was very nice of you, and I appreciate that. The donations you see downstairs are fantastic, I know we all talked about the donations, I was lucky enough to attend a, the Pet, what was it, Pet Suites last week, the grand opening, and it just was so happens that afterwards, we were taking stuff over to the Henby Bridge Fire Department, and when we loaded up the trucks and took them all over there, and by the time we got back, the lobby was almost full again with donations, so, and you see now, it's full again, and, you know, we've got to keep doing that, because this is, this is not a short-term problem, this is going to be going on for a long time. I hate to say it, it may be, it will be years before we can get this, this worked on, and kudos to all the state and North Carolina, and the whole country that has come in and has helped do like Americans should be doing, and concentrating on helping each other. Lastly, I just want to also mention that, you know, we have Hits After Six next Thursday, while we're out having a good time, maybe we could all bring something and donate it and leave it by the Town Hall on the way to park across the street. Well, I think I've said enough, I'm just happy to be here, and I think we had a good meeting tonight, and thank you, everybody, God bless you, and can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Unanimous.